And I can see like.
That might have worked.
Having some technical difficulties will be starting shortly.
We may have.
Now that I've lost the agenda. I call this May 5th meeting to order. Let's see here. If I can have a motion, or first off, do we have any additions to the posted agenda?
No.
Anybody from the audience, anything that's not being covered here? If you would like to have it considered, speak so now. Going, going, gone. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Can I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. The meeting, the last month's meeting are approved, it's the April 7th. Has been approved, okay. Public comment, if you have any public comment for anything that is not on the agenda. Is this something not on the agenda?
Yes, it's not on the agenda.
You have your five minutes.
Hello, my name is Elliot Killian, I reside in Ferguson Township. During the March 26, 2025 Regular Patent Township Board of Supervisors meeting, the majority voted to send my proposal for the R4 Zone to you, the Planning Commission. Two months later, you have not discussed it. There is a critical need for housing in Patent Township in the Center Region and the Center County. For some who work in the Center Region, they have to travel one, and many have to travel two hours away to be able to find somewhere affordable that they can live while they work here in the Center Region. Students downtown have the option of paying $1,400 a month, $1,400 a month, for a room that they have to share with their roommate. They do not get their own room for $1,400 a month. Personally, I work full-time at a software company. I live with my parents. If I did not live with my parents, I would not be able to live in the Center Region, or 50% of my income would go to rent. The analogy I have for the housing crisis is a house on fire. Well, the house burns local leaders like yourselves. Tell us it's fine. I ask that you treat the issue of housing, affordable housing, workforce housing, as a critical issue and act with urgency to solve it. What is the major reason? Housing is expensive. One of the major regions is that there is not enough housing. What is the major reason why there isn't enough housing? NIMBY, not in my backyard. I believe NIMBY is a human reaction, a reaction we will all have. It is a mixture of greed and fear. Working on housing, you will eventually activate the NIMBY reaction. I provided a handout to all of you, and should be in front of you, about possible changes you should and could discuss as a planning commission. These ideas include adopting R4 high-density housing with five floors, 55 feet maximum height, 70% building coverage, and half a parking space per bedroom. Then, to upzone all your R3 zone to R4. Make side yard setbacks for R2 to a standard 10 feet. Then, upzone all R1 to R2. Allow ADUs, also called granny flats or in-law suites, in all residential, residential zonings. Look at commercial areas to allow for residential use with five floors, 55 maximum height, and incentivize for higher building. I believe you will need to adopt most, if not all, of these changes to meet the, to meet the demand of housing. Why am I here? Why am I talking to you? I want to improve my community. I'm not here because I have a multimillion-dollar project. I'm not making any money off of the reports I've made, off of my time here. I'm here to better my community. I want to help people. I urge you to act now, to take action towards affordable housing. Thank you very much for serving the local government, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I just want to bring one thing up. The reason this hasn't made it on to the agenda yet, and I don't know if you're all aware of this or not, but Mr. Tilka, who is the CRPA Director, has resigned, and he is leaving May 16th. Summer Brown is now working for Patent Township, she was our local land use planner. Jenna is now the last planner standing, literally. She's the principal planner slash land use planner slash everything else planner. So, right now, there just isn't any bandwidth at the Center Region level to handle this. And I know Mr. Killian's been going to the other municipalities as well. I know he's been to Ferguson, and I believe the Borough, and perhaps others. And I know there was a discussion that this should probably be a regional solution. That regional planning may likely be going away. I don't know if Jenna has the bandwidth for all of that, so I don't think we all know right now. But it is something we're looking at. It's just slipped down a little bit because of the personnel staffing issues that we're having at the regional level.
Well, that's the question I wrote for her to ask you, so.
I answered it.
Is there anything that we can do as this body to bring this up at the next agenda meeting and at least discuss it?
Yeah, so we would like to have it on the next meeting in June, if possible. It just, again, depends on the number of plans that come in. We've got to prioritize the plans right now because the plans have a time clock associated with them. Also, there are some pieces of this that, while very worthwhile, aren't necessarily going to work in Patent Township because of our planned communities that we have out here, and a lot of our land is locked up in the planned communities, and we can't really change a lot of that zoning. So, there's some things we want to look at and have a good discussion with you on it. It's just we had three plans for this meeting, and that took priority over, and trying to get the short-term rental regulations finished at this meeting as well.
Another question. The, I guess, I guess the Clearview property, that was, remember, we, okay, so what's going on there?
I have not, yeah, I've not heard anything. I'm looking at Ara, who's sitting in the audience, to see if he has any updates on it. Because I believe that's HFL's property. The old radio station off of Waddle Clearview. Yeah, we rezoned it, and then it hasn't, we haven't seen anything since then.
Yeah, so that was rezoned, for example, Mr. Killian, you know, to, for, to be affordable housing, basically. I mean, that was our intent. So, we did act on that relatively quickly.
I'm, I'm going to ask staff, in all feasibility, to put this on our next, our next hearing, and if at least, if there isn't possibility, I am going to request that we invoke a work session to discuss it at least at that time.
Yeah, we had intended to have it on your agenda for this month, but there's everything else on your agenda for this month, so.
And I just also want to apologize to you that this is a matter that, that does definitely need to be discussed. And while it's not burning down to the ground, it is definitely an issue that needs to be addressed immediately so that any planned new developments moving forward will have access to a different or an upzoned possibility. So, where we can, we can, and where we can't, we can't. I know that staff has, and the Board of Supervisors above me, but I don't speak for them, have been very interested in the issue of housing. Very pro, both pro-development but also pro-workforce housing, because if you can't afford to live here, even though you work here, that, that's tax dollars that we're also not recuperating, and that's, that's not building a community. So, I ask, with, with any force that I have that be placed on the next meeting, and if not possible for that meeting, to please put it on a works, put it on the next available work schedule after that meeting. The reason why I do this is we have set timeframes that we have to rule on various projects. If we don't do them, then technically they get automatically approved, and sometimes that is not always in the best interest of the public as a whole. So, I hear you. Is placing it on next meeting, or at least getting a work hearing for you satisfactory that we're at least moving forward on this?
There will be a day that I will not show up. I will not help you, and that day is approaching very quickly.
And what day is that?
June 10th.
Okay. Please get something on before June 10th. Any other public comments? For or against closing the public comments, moving on to home occupation regulations. Staff, please take it away.
So, Patent Township staff's been reviewing and considering revising the home occupation regulations that are currently within the zoning ordinance. We have also reviewed other municipalities within the Center Region to compare what they have versus what Patent has. Within Chapter 425 zoning, under definitions, interpretations of regulations, you'll see in your agenda that there is the current definition of a home occupation, which is also the regulations for home occupations. This definition was last amended September 24th, 1986. So, in 2002, the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code adopted a no-impact home-based business definition, which you'll see in your agenda packet as well. And Section 603 of the MPC was also amended to add that zoning ordinance shall permit no-impact home-based businesses in all residential zones of the municipality as a use permitted by right. So, I have provided you with draft regulations that allow for a no-impact home-based business, as well as a low-impact based business. What we're looking for is considering revising the definition that we currently have to an accessory use of a dwelling unit, or for a dwelling for gainful employment. Working on an application for those interested in home occupations, and charging a reasonable fee for those home occupations, and that permit will be issued through the current permitting software that we use for zoning permits. And the intent is to have all new and existing home occupations, locations apply for a permit that will be upon the effective date of the revised regulations.
I have one question. The, the, does this apply to the, our, you know, our Airbnb businesses? Or?
No, this is specifically for those individuals that, for example, are an attorney, but they practice out of their home.
Right.
Sorry, poor example, maybe.
Okay, so, this, is signage included? Like, could they have their, a sign saying that they?
No.
Okay.
No, per the sign, current sign regulations, no signage is permitted for home-based occupations.
So, does this also mean that a person that is working from home doing their job? Is that considered a?
No.
Okay. Okay, so we're really talking about a dentist office, a beautician's office, or something on? Anything but signage cannot be put into place?
Correct.
Okay, how about a gentleman selling mattresses out of their garage?
No, because anything that they sell has to be produced on-site. So, I very highly doubt that they're creating a mattress in their home. You're stretching.
So, you're saying that is permissible or is not?
They would not be able to do that, no.
If they're making jewelry, though.
If they're making jewelry, they can do that. It has, the product that they are selling has to be created on-site.
On-site?
Yes.
Okay, so they can't have delivery or takeout?
No.
Okay.
The intent is not to have the increase of traffic, because a lot of this is in your R2 planned community districts, so you don't want to have the increased delivery vehicles with that.
So, you have somebody who's an Etsy seller who is doing sewing of clothes. Is, does that constitute somebody? I mean, that, they're, they're performing a service, it doesn't seem like it'd be low-impact, but how's that going to fit into something like this?
Are they shipping them from, meaning they're shipping them from their home?
Yeah.
So, you would already have the packaging. So, it would just be whether it's UPS, USPS picking it up. I mean, you're not going to have FedEx. FedEx usually doesn't pick up when they deliver, so.
So, somebody that, that is using their sewing machine, and they have fabric delivered to them, that is not a problem?
No.
Okay.
On the draft you did, one D, the outside appearance of signs, is that posted outside, or is that like a neon sign inside a glass window you can see from the outside?
It would be posted outside.
Okay, so it's okay if they have like a neon open sign in their window?
Any, if it's anything similar to commercial, whatever is behind the glass, we do not regulate.
Oh, okay. If I understood that item one, the no-impact, that's, you know, permitted use by rights, that's the easy thing. Item G, it says 25% of the floor space, but on the, something more of a business, I think it said 25% or 500 square feet. So, it looked like there was more restriction on the home business than there was on the double impact.
Correct.
Which I thought kind of odd, because 500 square feet for a doctor's office sounds pretty small.
Right, so our current regulations are 25% or 500 square feet.
Right.
That's the current guideline right now. The information that you have here is provided also by the MPC, where they're regulating that as well. It's whichever is greater, or lesser.
Well, one G doesn't have the 500 square feet.
I'm sorry?
One G, the no-impact, doesn't have 500 square feet.
Correct, so these are those.
For making it more liberal for the less intensive service.
Correct, correct.
Because they're not having people coming to their business.
Correct.
So, people that are running a low-impact business might have clients coming to their home, which is in a residential neighborhood. People running a no-impact business would be like the Etsy seller. The Etsy person is creating a product and selling it on the internet, and then leaves to ship the product. No one is physically coming to pick it up. So, that's where the square footage is, just the 25%. What you want, don't want to do is have someone that decides to run a doctor's office out of their home, and then it takes up 1,000 square feet, and they're having patients, and they have parking and other things.
So, the 500 square feet is by design for those offices to limit them?
Correct.
Okay, I guess.
I'm just curious, so what prompted the, us looking into making a change?
So, we had a complaint regarding a, may I say it?
Yeah.
A tree trimming service in R2 over here in Park Forest, where they were parking their large industrial bucket trucks, work trucks, in the residential district. So, a neighbor approached us to consider revising the regulations, and since they haven't been touched since 1986, it's time to do a refresh.
Well, and also, the economy has changed so much since the pandemic. There's a lot of people that run these businesses out of their homes now, and that they're creators and makers and things. So, it's good for us. I know Harris Township just did similar revisions to their regulations. Others in the region have also done it, so it's good for us to be up with the times.
A sewing shop, a lady that does sewing, would that be permissible?
Yeah.
Okay, so just not retail, so to speak.
So, I'm learning that some of the restrictions are by design, because you don't want certain things to happen, so maybe, maybe it's mixed up, but in the existing home occupation, it doesn't permit, both on a floor more than two persons, but in the new one, in F, it's only one person. Again, for a doctor's office to have only one non-family, that a family person employed seems almost unfeasible.
Well, again, we're going back to the traffic, because you have to allow.
You're being more restrictive.
Yes.
We don't necessarily want a doctor's office in a residential neighborhood. Residential, like Park Forest was not intended to have commercial businesses run from.
Okay, well, I guess I was asking for intent, and now you're elaborating on intent. So, this is by design to not have certain things happen?
Correct.
Even though the less restrictive can have more people.
Are there currently any places that do have, let's say, a beauty shop in, in Park Forest? And the reason I'm asking is my mom, when I grew up in Wilshire, she had her shop in the property on Wilshire.
There is a record on file for a beautician, yes.
Yeah, so would that person be grandfathered, or would they have to apply by the new?
They would have to apply as well.
Okay.
And if you think of a beautician, they may have one or two at the most at home.
Yeah.
And so, you're not, maybe you have one individual they're in to get their hair colored, and then while they're there, you have somebody just coming in for a cut. So, you're not having five, six, seven individuals waiting at the same time.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then going to subsection E on one, the business activity may not use any equipment or processes which create noise. How are we defining what that noise is? Because I think a sewing machine creates noise.
Isn't it?
It's seeming like an awful outside of the dwelling.
Yeah, so the sewing machine isn't going to probably create enough noise that the next-door neighbor's going to hear it.
Right.
But somebody with a wood crafting, a wood crafting shop would be.
Maybe, depending on how they're doing, running their business.
But you have something about the noise ordinance, right?
Yeah, we have the noise ordinance, it sounds.
Well, my issue is, is whenever we say, here's a bunch of new rules that we're going to put out, and we're not specifying or specifying to something like the noise ordinance, then somebody's going to be pointing at this and saying, you need to write up my next-door neighbor, he's running a wood shop.
But in that instance, they would call, contact the police. The police would go out and investigate the noise complaint, and then we would see if there's anything that we need to do from that side of things. And didn't this no-impact came, these regulations came from state?
These came from the MPC.
Yep, from the municipal planning code.
Has everybody asked the questions that they would like to ask? And what, what do you need from us?
Well, if you're okay with this, we'll move it on to the supervisors for discussion at their meeting next Wednesday, the 14th.
I would move to move this forward to the supervisors for discussion.
We have a motion to move in a proper or second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. We move this to the. We move this to this board of supervisors. Which brings us now to rental housing regulations. Is this going to be Jenna, or is this going to be?
It is going to be a combination of myself and Dr. Walt Schneider. Give this over. So, that's meeting on March 3, 2025. Planning Commission continued its review of rental housing regulations. The commission reached consensus to move forward with the development of a rental housing ordinance. This ordinance would incorporate a points-based system applicable to properties found in violation of township ordinances. At the March meeting, Mr. Schneider, Director of Center Region Code Administration, presented an overview of the current property maintenance code and identified modifications that are needed in order to implement the proposed ordinance and the point system for patent township. So, provided in the agenda is a draft of Mr. Schneider's proposed amendment for review by Planning Commission. We also have him with us tonight to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any opening questions? Hearing none. Dr. Schneider?
Good evening. At your request, what you have in front of you is a draft proposed ordinance effectively doing two things. One, reducing the number of days from seven to one, which would be consistent with, at this point, Ferguson College, State College Borough, as well as Belphon Borough, as far as the length of duration that requires a rental permit from the Center Region Code Administration. The requirements are consistent, no matter what the duration of rental is for patent township. So, this does not invoke or build any other additional permitting. This is just strictly a same rental permit, so you would have the same requirements if you rented for two days, or if you rented for 45 days. In addition, the second piece of this ordinance updates the requirements in Chapter Eight that are currently in place, but really, more than anything else, clarifies that the nuisance property regulations, which currently are only being used by the Borough State College, have been updated to provide, basically, ordinances pointing to patent townships, codification of ordinances regarding dogs, weeds, clearing of sidewalks, et cetera, similar to the way the Boroughs points to theirs. Last, it also would indicate that if there is any appeals regarding the points that are garnered onto a property, and the potential suspension of the ability to rent a property due to excessive points, that once the, you would get beyond the municipal manager, the next level of appeals would be heard by the Center Region Appeals Board that hears this appeals regarding rental housing, fire permits, building permits, et cetera. It's a regionally-appointed board with seven members, three of which are architects, three of which are engineers, and then one contractor. I would be happy to answer any questions regarding what is proposed.
I open the floor to questions.
I thought it looked good.
Do we have any questions?
No questions?
Two little trivial things.
Sure.
Half-moon township doesn't have anything?
So, half-moon township, when we wrote a number of years ago, when we put together the Center Region, at that time, Building Safety and Property Maintenance Code, we had got an inclination that they were interested, so we incorporated them into the code, so at any point in time, they could opt in. They have, we have, I believe we've had three false starts, where they've shown interest, we've done some work, and we've kept them in there hoping that they would eventually come in, but at this point, they have not. So, that's why they're still in there, both in the footnotes and in durations, but they're just x's right now.
And, I'm sorry, a little new, what's a tourist?
So, what we basically have is, depending on the municipality, we've got some differing definitions, so we've tried to make sure we have them in place, so if they're used. So, right now, patent township doesn't have a definition for a tourist. We've tried our best to make a, I don't want to say a single document. When I first got to the Center Region Code Administration, we were using one document that, you know, we basically modified six ways, and it was really difficult, I believe, for developers to understand where differences were, rental owners, even my own staff, depending on which township you had, to make sure you had the right booklet. And so, we tried to get, as best we could, a one-size-fits-all document, so that it's easy to understand and transportable between the municipalities.
Any other questions? Walt, can we have you back in June to discuss R4?
I've always made the statement that I'm your building code official. If you would like me here, all I have to do is be contacted by staff, and I'm more than happy to be here anytime you'd like.
Given the truncated time, do you mind asking him to get this?
I don't think any of the R4 stuff is under Walt's purview. It's planning discussion, it's not code discussion.
All right. Walt, you need a motion for us to move this forward?
Send this to the supervisors, yes, please.
Motion. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Park Forest United Methodist Church, re-lot, lot addition.
Make sure everyone at home, let's see what I have.
And what do you need from us at the start, so we know what to be paying attention to?
Jenna's loading it on the screen.
So, I'm sharing.
Thinking about it, oh, there it is.
All right. All right. Park Forest United Methodist Church, re-plot and lot addition. So, provided in the agenda, we have a re-plot lot addition plan for the Park Forest United Methodist Church. So, essentially, they are re-plotting two of the parcels that are included, and I'll kind of go through the basics of what's going on, what's a tract, what's a parcel, just so everyone is on the same page. But essentially, this property, it's two parcels with county level, and it just involves refiguring tracts that are within the parcels. So, this is in your R2 low-density residential zoning district. So, I wrote out essentially what they're doing, but honestly, it's just very much easier if it's illustrated. So, essentially, we have, I don't know if people at home can see me. So, you will see two blue boxes outlined. Those are the two parcels that are technically the parcel ID numbers that these properties have. You will see the dashed red lines. Those are the tracts that are being described. So, within that big triangle piece, it is comprised of three different tracts within that one. And vice versa, the smaller lot is one parcel, and in their deed, it describes two different tracts, all within the same parcel. So, essentially, tract refers to a surveyed portion of land, which may not yet be formally subdivided or eligible for development. So, it is legally established, however, they are all within this pre-established parcel. So, what is being proposed essentially are those dotted red lines will go away in the deed description themselves. It actually threw staff for a little bit, because when we went to Webbia to look, we were noticing that there were, the parcel is already subdivided as we needed, and then we realized there were tracts going on in here. So, essentially, we are getting rid of those red dashed lines, and you will be left with two separate parcels with no tracts being described in the deed.
Question, what's behind this? I mean, what is the, why, why is this being done?
Great question. Oh, and we have the applicant here as well.
Oh, good. Why are you doing this?
My name's Craig Schuf, and I represent the church. And what we're trying to accomplish here is, we're, we're trying to eliminate the three tracts, put them into two tracts, but there's, one of the track lines goes through the church. And to eliminate that, that track line that goes through the church, we're re-plotting all three into two parcels, and so.
No, is that because you want to sell off the smaller parcel, or?
Yes, the, the house that's on the, I guess, parsonage or whatever you want to call it, is going to be sold off at some date.
Okay.
Is that the house on North Oak, or is it on Park Forest staff? Is it on North Oak or Park Forest?
It's Park Forest address.
Okay.
I don't think we're concerned with why it's being done.
The two lots being created are conforming with the R2 zoning districts. The lot 2R, the smaller portion, does have that access established from Park Forest. So, there really isn't a concern, it's all within the regional growth boundary, and there is already sewer and water.
One other question, this has nothing to do with what you're doing, that this all makes sense as you explained it, but that alley that's, and the Chipotle people are going in and out of there like crazy, and I'm just wondering, is the, is the township aware of the traffic jam and sort of the danger of?
I mean, I can say I actually was not really aware of it until now, but Nicole?
We never have received any complaints about that, so when Chipotle came in, that, which is Cornflower Lane?
Right.
Used to be way back when, Bull Alley. So, I actually found correspondence back 1980s, early 80s, where there was conversations back and forth with the board of supervisors at that time. That's actually a right-of-way, so there's, it's permitting them the ability to do that, because if you take notice when you get further down out of Chipotle?
Right.
It kind of disappears, it goes into individuals' backyards. But when Chipotle came in, and Panda Express, and FedEx, and all that, and that all came in, that's their right-of-way.
Does that cause any issues for you all?
I don't think.
Just curious, just every time I've been around there, it's like a little zooey.
Any other questions?
On page five, in the Consider Action, it says recommend to the BOS approval plan and waiver. What waiver is submitted?
No waiver was submitted, that was a typo.
So, did I get points?
Yes, yes.
You're going to do well tomorrow in our train.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question. So, if we separate this land and you guys decide you want to expand, is there any chance of expansion?
No, they're, it's deleting the tracts.
It's deleting everything.
We're not, we're not changing the lots, we're deleting the tracts, is that correct?
Yep.
And there's a house on 2R now, is that part of the church property, or is that?
It's a separate, it's a separate tract right now where the house is. We're just changing the lines, so the one line doesn't go through the church.
They're cleaning up old legal documents. Motion to approve?
So.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Patent Crossing Phase Two, Kava Restaurant. I know we had plenty of comments about this last time.
All right, so provided in the agenda is Patent Crossing Phase Two B, Kava Restaurant, final land development plan for 1752, North Atherton Street. So, this property is approximately 28.48 acres. It's zoned planned commercial C2 and mixed-use overlay 2, so that's MXD2. The proposed restaurant is a 2,500-square-foot building with associated infrastructure. It's located at the northeast corner of the Patent Crossing master plan, which I have highlighted, the portion that we will be talking about tonight. So, this area is approximately about three, well, over three acres. The lot is currently served by public water and sewer with frontage on public or private roads. On March 26, 2025, the applicant received conditional use approval from the board of supervisors for the drive-through component of this use. So, staff finds that the plant meets all the township regulations with the following conditions, which is completion of all items noted on staff's memorandum dated April 29, 2025, and all outstanding plan review comments from the township dated December 20 and March 21. And we have the applicant here as well, if there are additional questions. I have a couple layouts zoomed in one, I didn't know if it would be getting blurry at this point, but for discussion tonight, if there are additional questions with this proposal.
Now, this was the one that we all were scratching our head about, the positioning of the exit.
Of the drive-through.
Of the drive-through.
Yes.
Given that I don't have the plans from back then, has there been a change on this?
Yes, so what the applicant has done is they bumped out the drive-through, so the original plan that was submitted had the final exit, I would say, closer to that building, which you would get more of those impacts. So, the goal was to bump that out to give more space for those parking spaces that are right next to the building, as well as include, I believe it was a stop sign in that area. So, there's where that there is this cross-traffic in that situation.
You have a question, Ellen, I hear it.
Yeah, well, I was confused about the number of parking spaces versus the restaurant occupancy.
So, for this type of zoning district, this planned aspect, the amount of parking that's required for this restaurant, this type of use, they are still proposing to share it with the Aldi site, and that is part of this type of, I'd say, smart growth development concept, is to have that shared parking if it is available. So, I will say that the Aldi site was overparked, and it was to accommodate a lot of these new businesses that will be coming in. So, total between Aldi and this new building, there is enough parking on the master plan site. Additionally, with the shared use, with the shared parking with Aldi, we did, we were able to get improvements to that intersection as part of this plan, because if you're sharing, and you want people crossing the street, we wanted to be safe.
Yes, that, that was the other question.
You're right on.
And the same with biking.
Yep, you're right on.
And it did say a proposed site for a future message, a menu board. So, that's the drive-through, yeah. So, there's, I thought this was just a pickup.
Yes, so that is still on the plan. We need to get a resubmission from the applicant, because you will notice if you look at the plan set, we need a new plan note for the conditional use approval, et cetera. But part of that conditional use, if this was solely for a no-menu board use, as soon as a menu board is installed, that requires the conditional use process again, because now we have two points of traffic queuing on this site, which was not planned for during that queuing analysis.
I thought that was a key point we discussed last time, and on page two, sheet three, it says a future conduit for a future drive-through use. That was our concern.
Yes, so the master plan has three drive-throughs technically in this area, if the queuing analysis can support it. So, the queuing analysis that we saw through the conditional use process, queuing analysis for Kava is fine, they'd be able to get another drive-through at the far end closest to Aldi, however, if there were to be a drive-through in that middle pad site, it would be very tight, and the queuing analysis did not support a drive-through. tight and the queuing analysis did not support a drive-through in that location. But the master plan did have this area for drive-through uses. And with any future drive-through use, they will have to go through the conditional use process again and provide analysis for the queuing of that new building, the new use, et cetera. So any future stuff will have no impact on Kava. Kava as designed and proposed as pickup, it meets the queuing analysis for our traffic engineer. Future stuff, that analysis will need to be done and it will need to consider Kava. However, any site work for Kava, that would have to be done privately with a new plan at another pad in this site. So essentially, Kava's locked in with this.
I think this was answered last time as well. I'm sorry, but the white space to the south of the restaurant, is that a?
That's a planned, that's actually a planned building.
Yep.
If you take a look at the larger ones.
Yep.
So, yeah, if you take a look at PC 1.1 of the big packet, you'll see a pie-in-the-sky view overlaid with the, with the Kava B3, which is actually their, oh, help me out here.
Master plan.
Is this, it's the water, it's, it's the transfer stormwater.
Stormwater.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that shows the, sort of the pie-in-the-sky view.
For stormwater, especially when you look at master planned sites like this, you need to be able to have a ballpark of your impervious area.
Well, I believe I said at last meeting this was brought up, I'm, I'm concerned with, I'm concerned with three drive-throughs.
That's why they have to go through the conditional use process for any additional drive-throughs.
Okay.
And they also have to amend the master plan. So we'll be seeing that amendment shortly after this plan is approved.
Do we have any other questions, comments, or concerns from the board? And I assume that you need a motion from us to send it up?
Yes, please.
May I have a motion?
Motion with, with the amendments, with all the changes.
With the conditions, yep.
Conditions.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Sorry, I just had a moment where my brain stopped working. All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion approved. Send it to the board, please.
All right. Perfect.
And I have misplaced my?
Agenda.
Agenda again.
I can just keep going if you'd like.
We're now moving on to Graysewes.
All right. So providing the agenda is the Graysewes Plant Community, Grayse Point Neighborhood Phase 7, Section B, Final Subdivision Land Development Plan. This property is approximately 174 acres. It's zoned planned community and it proposes a construction of 17 single-family homes, one common open space lot, and the dedication of a public street, that's Phoebe Road, to Pat Township. Staff find that the plan meets all township regulations with the completion of all outstanding plan review comments from township staff dated February 13, 2025. So up on the board, this is the subject lot. So the area that we are talking about, where you see a lot of those purple lots, that is where we will be adding on essentially a cul-de-sac for these 17 single-family homes, as well as the open space lots that you'll see on the top portion of this plan. And then we have the applicant here as well if there are any additional questions planning commission may have.
So what do you say about the open space?
So the open space lots in the northern portion.
There's two in the top right?
Yep, but there's no houses on them.
Oh, I didn't quite understand it because it said there were 17 properties.
And there's stormwater lots as well.
But they were counted as the 17.
Yes.
So they are not going to be built. So there's actually 15 houses.
There should be.
There are 15 houses and 17 lots, including those two.
Yes.
But they're open space.
Yes.
And that'll be explicitly debated as owned by the HOA.
Yep. And we have Mr. Pratt here as well.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I saw the comment about native species. Is that something they'll be asked to do?
Yep.
Nice.
Yeah, trust me. When you live in an area where they used one particular type of tree and it has died because of Emerald Darters, you appreciate the, having to use three different native species.
So I have a couple of questions about the basin, about the open space. Is that for water collection or is that like a swale or what is that?
The area to the right, plan right, is an existing stormwater management basin that was built about 12 years ago, base number six. The area surrounding the lots is just common open space for visual enjoyment.
Okay. So where that, like, it's like, almost like an open pit. It looks like a, it looks like strip mining or something. It's way, way down. What's going to be done with that?
That's a stormwater basin, so nothing. It's there to manage stormwater. It's doing it now. Takes it in fast, lets it out slow, and also retains a certain volume for infiltration into the ground.
What will it look like?
A large grass-like area.
So it'll be seeded and planted?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And then across the road, there's all like construction waste and all that kind of stuff. What's going to be done there?
That's slated under the master plan for future development someday. It's being used just for temporary earth storage right now as they construct the current phase.
Oh, okay. I thought this was the last phase.
This is the last phase of the Grayse Point neighborhood, but not of the entire Grayse Woods Plant Community.
Okay. Thank you.
What are the lot sizes, just out of curiosity?
They range from about .1 acres. There's actually one that's .223 acres.
So a quarter acre or less?
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit less than a quarter acre. And the range is because they're all pie-shaped around the cul-de-sac.
And what do you think size-wise of the homes that you're going to get out there?
Very similar to what's being proposed in Phase 7A now. So just looking to give you a size.
It's going to go this way. Don't move this way.
About 2,000 square foot footprint, two-story homes.
Well, we need more of those.
Yeah, in fact, they're identical to what's being built in 7A now.
There's some detailed discussion going on over here. I'm just trying to figure out.
I was just trying to figure out how the, where the stormwater, can you show me where the stormwater retention area is?
It's right here.
Okay. Okay, so it's.
That's going to be one heck of a sledding hill.
Actually, maybe so.
Scared.
Let's just make sure that we don't have any hard, hard objects in that first 100 feet.
All soft grass, three to one, so.
Perfect. We'll be there with our slants. What about, will they have sidewalks like it does now? Has sidewalks now?
Yeah, that's right, on both sides and then encircling the cul-de-sac as well.
Yeah, I love the, I honestly love that bike path, the bike walk path. It's just, I always see people on it.
Yeah, it's very popular.
Really. Really good thing to do.
Scott, hurry. The board happy?
Yes.
All right, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And again, this is with restrictions placed on by the board or by staff that everything is being met to their standards, correct? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously and back to losing where we are.
Still working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, do you have anything for us?
No, you're supposed to contribute whatever you have here. I missed the whole comment. I'm sorry about that. I was talking to Walt.
Yeah, I saw you run out. I was like, we're going to be coming up on yours in a few moments.
Well, that's a problem.
All right, till next time.
See you, Bob.
So that brings us to other business. We're all sad to see Michael go.
Yep. Shameless plug for CRPA training tomorrow, 5:30. I'll be training.
Should we have signed up in advance for that?
You can, but if you let me know, I can pass it on as well. 5:30 cog, how to read a plan.
I just emailed him. Is he still there or no?
He is. He is still there till 16.
Okay.
So, I mean, is, is, when is the, you know, celebration of thank you for your hard work for less than a year, get out?
Yeah, well, I don't know because he is going on vacation, as am I, and, yeah, it's kind of bare right now up there.
Okay.
Maybe today, Cinco de Mayo.
There you go. Impromptu. Oh, that is today.
Oh, it is today.
It is.
Margarita.
Happy Cinco de Mayo.
Right. Margarita time, Scott.
Yes.
Now that we have electricity.
Hearing no other business?
So before you, we actually need somebody to sign up to be the board of supervisors rep. Even though we have Daniel listed there.
That was last one.
That was last one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we actually don't have an individual signed up for that yet, so we're looking for a volunteer to be the board rep.
Can it be?
Or Wednesday night, right?
Uh, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
Yeah. Because I was questioning why I have the center count house.
We have land counts that night.
I will not be able to do it.
Could I, could I do it by? Oh, did you say? Oh, no, no, you do it.
I'm not rushing.
While you have the volunteer and she'll back him up.
All right. No, I was saying I could do it via Zoom, but I can't do it in person.
And I'm in Harrisburg on Wednesdays and Thursdays, so that would be a tough commute. It's already tough to make it back for the CRP.
We've got a fast car.
It will be May 14.
Don't say that too loud.
Oh, do we have someone who's going to be?
Yes.
Mr. Pro.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So if there's any other business?
I would just like to say thank you to all of the people who got the electricity back on and cleared all the downed trees and all of that. Thank you for your hard work. I want it on record.
Yep.
Yes.
Well, if you'd like to make a motion to call them out and everything, I'll let you do that.
To do what?
To, to.
Commend.
To commend.
I commend them.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I said that.
Given that I have, go ahead and hold a vote.
Oh, okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, that's one we can all vote on.
And we have one abstention because he works for the PUC.
Yes.
Oh.
That's why you.
Oh, that's why you did.
Um, okay. I get it, yeah.
There are certain things that I will not make a statement on. If there's no other business, I move that we adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.